All right, it is five o'clock and time to call the, I'd like to call the five o'clock work meeting to order. First item on the agenda is an executive session. Do I have a motion that we go into an executive session?
A minute.
Motion by Mr. Sead, that was second. Second by Mr. Fulmer. All in favor? All right, we will be in exec-- oh, Todd, you on?
I am here sir, I'm talking to the Chief of Justice down in T.O.R., so I'm here for work, but I am on my way.
Very good. So we are unanimous. We were going to executive session and we will have to stay in here for executive session due to, unless I call, Todd.
Unless we call him on cell phone.
Todd, would it be okay if I give you a call on my cell phone like we did last time?
Yes sir, that'd be just fine.
All right, but we will make it as brief as possible. So Mr. Robby Eding and Todd, we ain't gonna leave.
Do I have a motion that we come out of executive session?
Take it, Mr. President.
A motion by Mr. Fulmer for a second. Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
We are unanimous. We are out of executive session. County Council went into executive session for discussion of contractual matters, discussion of matters related to the sale of real estate pursuant to South Carolina law, section 30-4-70A2, and legal matters, discussion of matters related to Newberry County's zoning ordinance and land development regulations, and establishment of a temporary moratorium on the approval of residential subdivisions of five or more lots pursuant to South Carolina code of laws, section 30-4-70A2. No action was taken during executive session. Item number two, the review and discussion of proposed revisions to the land development regulations of Newberry County codified in chapter 154 of the Code of Ordinances of Newberry County. Shaker?
Yes, sir. I appreciate it so much. You know, at the last meeting, we had on the agenda second reading of the land development regulations, which, you know, is something we've been looking at now for a little while. Had gone through the planning commission after, you know, they had studied it as well. And, you know, like anything, with volumes like that, you know, the longer you spend on them, the more time you can identify things that can be tweaked or improved on. And I think we've done that. The motion was made to table the ordinance, which council approved. And I guess the main reason of putting it on the 5:00 p.m. meeting agenda was, number one, I felt like we have some time, which we do, to talk a little bit about it. And number two, you know, the table motion, there's a need to bring it off the table for further consideration by council at this meeting. And so I was just going to recommend to y'all, one, well, there's three courses of action because you could certainly vote the ordinance down, but what we'd recommend you consider is either, one, removing it from the table, which would be a motion, a second, and a vote of council to do that, and then to approve second reading, or remove it from the table, again, motion, second, action, vote by council, and then vote to postpone it. And postpone gives us the ability, you can specify a date, which is typically recommended. You could also make it indefinite. And then through our agenda planning process, you know, we could put second reading on the agenda at the appropriate time for council to act. And that will enable us to consider it at a future date that's not the immediate next meeting. So it's just more of a procedural thing. The other reason we put it on the 5:00 p.m. meeting agenda was just to get a feel from y'all, and it may be something that, you know, if you choose to postpone it, you may just want to wait and have a more thorough discussion of it. But just wanting to get a feel from y'all, what, if anything, you'd like to see changed in the ordinance, or anything you need us to look at. I know from the discussion that occurred at the last meeting and some conversations that have taken place, I know that the Land Development Review Committee was of particular interest. And, you know, that's that concept of, you know, word was used at the last meeting, concurrency. It's a form of concurrency that uses a body composed of representatives of entities that need to be at the table when some major subdivisions are considered to provide input. And what that committee does is ensures that those entities have a seat at the table, they're able to review, they provide structured feedback, and then that structured feedback guides the decision of the planning commission and the administration of that by the land development administrator, you know, Ms. Wirth, and becomes part of the record. Now, I know one thing that could be done is if you feel like we need some language that maybe is more explicit about how that process works, we could certainly do that. But that's definitely the intent of it. And it does talk about review and how it becomes, you know, that structured feedback becomes part of the record. But, you know, we can certainly expand on that for y'all. And then you'll notice, too, in the copy of the ordinance you have in front of you, the section, which is 154 dot 16, so section 16 of the ordinance, there was an oversight not having the school district of Newberry County in there. That was something the planning commission identified and wanted changed, and it may just have been a versioning issue, but the copy that went into the agenda packet for first and second reading did not have the school district listed. So we wanted to make sure that got taken care of, and we highlighted it just to draw it to your attention, because obviously they would provide very meaningful, important, and important feedback. I mean, they'd be a significant member of the committee. So that has been addressed in the copy before you. But if there's any questions about the ordinance or anything y'all need us to look at, you know, we'd appreciate your feedback.
If we have second reading on, you still have opportunity to make changes before third reading, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
My question would be, based on comments we had last meeting, as well as comments and conversations that we've had, discussions that we've had on several of these issues, do you feel that if we do have second reading, that staff has enough time in order to address those questions, those concerns? In other words, I don't want to put an overburden on staff in order to be scrambling to get back to us with answers.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. Yeah, I think we can get that done for you for the April's, I'm sorry, the March 19th meeting. If we run into an issue there and y'all don't object to it, we could do second reading on April 2nd, if we need just a little bit more time. But in terms of like some additional language in the Land Development Review Committee section of the ordinance and the other sections where the committees reference, like in terms of its role, I feel confident we could get that done by April 2nd. I'm pretty sure we can get it done by the 19th in two weeks. If there's anything more that, you know, y'all would like us to look into, that could have a bearing on, you know, the amount of time we need. You know, and one other thing I didn't mention already, we have had a situation with a subdivision that's currently under construction where there is, you know, we don't have a lot of instances of this in the county where there's a significant space between the backside of the curb and sidewalk, and in this particular subdivision there is, and there's some landscaping there, and they've installed irrigation. And we really want language in this ordinance that would not allow irrigation systems within the public right of way. We just want to make that clear so that we're not running into that, you know, and then, you know, the developer comes back, well, it's not in the ordinance, we didn't realize that was a problem, and then, you know, we're in a situation there because of what it could do in terms of undermining the road base if there was a leak or overwatering or something like that. So that's another, I know that's a change we recommend to y'all be made to the ordinance between now and third reading, you know, whenever that occurs. Those are the only two things I know of at this point, but if there's some other things y'all would like us to look into, I mean, we'd do that.
I think most of it's going to be addressed through other ordinances, though, the things that we were looking at, I believe.
Yeah, a lot of it was zoning, yeah, you know, related to clustering.
Also, like, you know, input from the solid waste collection, even though that's under public works, just make sure that's identified, what kind of burden that would put on the county if you build a large subdivision there. Also, we, in our ordinance, we talk about flag lots, and right at first it says it discourages flag lots, but then, do we want flag lots, or do we just want to do away with them? And that's another thing we could probably discuss. And then also a thing in there about, just like we talked about developers doing a contract, what effect are they going to have on the infrastructure for the whole county? The schools, the roads, the collection facilities, law enforcement, EMS, fire service, everything that is going to affect, and how are we going to provide those services, and how are we going to pay for it? So we just need to make sure we can capture that in there.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And I think Ms. Jones, I think she alluded to impact fees, but we don't want, what we're talking about is not necessarily impact fees. What was the term you used?
Development agreement.
Okay, sure. Yeah, so if we can include some of that, I think certainly that would, that's necessary.
Absolutely, yeah.
Anyway.
Okay.
So I go back to my original question, you know, timeframe, you know, if y'all need extra time, this isn't something we need to rush, so, you know, it, anyway, if we need extra time in order to get it right, then I think now's the time in order to allow for that.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
I agree with your recommendation.
Yeah. Well, you know, I mean, a motion to postpone would give us that, and I think what we could do is come back to y'all and, you know, with a recommend, you know, here are recommended additions to the ordinance, and here's a recommended timeframe for adopting those. I mean, I think that'd be perfectly fine. And then I think we don't have any, you know, kind of confusion about when this is coming back to council for third reading. So I think that'd be perfectly fine, you know, provided y'all are comfortable with it, but, you know.
I have no problem with that.
I just have a, I have a question, please.
Yes, sir.
Sir.
All right, so the first part's common. I think there was a lot of confusion about how this versus the approval of the second reading might apply, and I know I said that last meeting, but I feel like there was a lot of confusion about how those two are applied. But can you talk to us a little bit about how intensively this versus the moratorium we'll be considering at the six o'clock meeting are linked together, and how it would affect on those? Would they be better on the current pact?
Yeah, absolutely. I'd be glad to speak to that, yeah. I think some of the confusion at the last meeting, you know, that we encountered was that the ordinance directly related to that proposed development on 773, the very large subdivision, and in actuality, the land development regulations really are about standards. You know, these are the standards that the roads have to be built to in a major subdivision. These are the standards that have to be met for the stormwater. You know, there's some dimensional requirements in there, too, you know, street naming provisions. So they're more like design standards. The question with 773 was a zoning question, because in order for that project to move forward, if it were, there would be, potentially rezoning would be necessary, or a form of clustering would have to, under the zoning ordinance, we have a provision for cluster developments, that would have to be triggered in order for the project to move forward. So they really are two separate things. The moratorium that is proposed tonight, the 270-day moratorium, certainly because it applies to subdivisions of five lots or more with lots, two acres or smaller in size, probably not the best term to use, but it buys council more time. If the goal is to apply these higher standards to developments going forward, and as many of them as possible going forward, then it does give us nine months to refine this ordinance and to also, you know, explore everything in the zoning ordinance and identify any possible changes in it. So they are kind of hand glove. And, you know, what the moratorium essentially will do is just allow us to press the pause button to do some further research. And that's really why the motion to postpone consideration of the ordinance, I don't think it really presents any challenges from, to us for prospective subdivision developments because if the moratorium passes, you know, we won't see any of those that don't already, haven't already achieved vested rights moving forward. So it does give us a little more time to, you know, explore the land development regulations, too, and kind of refine this language and all.
All right, thank you. That was my impression, but I wanted to hear that out of the picture.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
So you feel like we're okay to have a motion to postpone second reading without actually setting a date?
I think that would be wise in this case, yeah. Because, you know, if we were to make significant changes to these new land development regulations that have gone through the planning commission, we really ought to send it back to the planning commission to review it and have it come back to council.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
And we can just keep you apprised of the exact process and timeline on that as we get a clearer picture on.
Okay.
Yeah, get arms around it, yeah.
We have to have a motion to untable it first.
To remove it from the table.
Before we even move to that item, right?
That's right, and that would need a second and be approved by council by vote, and then a motion to postpone.
Very good. All right, that is all we have on the agenda for the 5:00 o'clock meeting to have a motion to adjourn the 5:00 o'clock work session. Motion by Councilman Smith, second by Reverend Scurry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
We are adjourned. At six o'clock, I'd like to call the County Council meeting order with indication in play by, well, Councilman Paul.
Let's bow our heads. Lord Father, we gather here tonight to conduct the business for the citizens of Newberry County, and give us the strength, the wisdom, and knowledge that we may make the right decisions on every thing we have on our agenda tonight. Also, we'd like to give, want you to look over our first responders and everything, and we have, our county has supported the wildfires down in the Myrtle Beach area by sending trucks and firefighters down there to help those people out in that catastrophe. Also, our law enforcement, EMS personnel, the coroner's office, all our first responders that attend to all our citizens' needs. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for coming out, being involved in county business, one comment to start with, if you, if you have any desire to speak or have comments, please see Andrew right, right now, before we start, so that we can have your name on the list. Item number one on the agenda, we'll take this too, if that's okay, adoption of the consent agenda, Newberry County Council work session, February 19th, 2025, and Newberry County Council meeting, February 19th, 2025. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Reverend Scurry, second by Smith, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Did forget to mention, I'm supposed to put this on record, Councilman Reader is on business and cannot be with us via Zoom or in person, so he sends his regrets. All right, item number two, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I'm going to make that announcement about the, the, I'll lean.
I was going to do that during the.
Okay, 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 okay.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept the agenda? Motion by Councilman Sees, second by Mr. Fulmer, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number three, a proclamation in recognition of Disability Awareness Month of Newberry County. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion by, pardon?
Would you like to, uh, read, read proclamation?
Read it first?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure I would. All right. County of Newberry, whereas many residents and families of Newberry County are impacted by severe lifelong disabilities, including autism, traumatic brain injuries, spinal cord injuries, and intellectual and related disabilities, and whereas people with lifelong disabilities are productive citizens, neighbors, and family members deserving respect and opportunities for economic self-sufficiency, independency, and person, personal growth, and whereas residents of Newberry County with and without disabilities work together, play together, worship together, learn together, and grow together, and whereas family members, caregivers, and service providers selflessly offer daily care, assistance, supervision, and physical and emotional support to individuals with disabilities to ensure their full participation in community life, and whereas President Ronald Reagan declared March as National Disabilities Awareness Month in 1987, to provide understanding, encouragement, and opportunities that help individuals with disabilities lead productive and fulfilling lives, and whereas the 2025 observance of National Disabilities Awareness Month celebrates 38 years of advocacy for and success of people with disabilities in education, employment, and community activities. Now, therefore, Newberry County Council does hereby proclaim this month of March 2025 as Disabilities Awareness Month in Newberry County, and encourages all residents of Newberry County to work together to promote increased opportunities for people with disabilities to recognize the many contributions made by people with disabilities in our county, and to honor the dedication of the caregivers who bring support and hope to their fellow citizens. Proclaim and approve this fifth day of March 2025, Newberry County Council. Do I have a motion that, to accept this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve, sir.
Motion by Councilman Sees, second by Councilman Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I would just say, as in a moment of, of personal note, having a, a son who has special needs and having seen what programs like BDSM and the support of a community can do to make somebody thrive, I think he's an poster child for success, and so, I'm, I'm blessed to have him as a member of our community and BDSM, so proud of, proud of him, sir.
Absolutely, absolutely. Do we have anyone here representing?
Yes, we do.
Come up, please, and let's present this.
Present this to you all. Hold it up, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Always special to recognize such, such good, good things in our community. All right, item number four, ordinance number 02022025, an ordinance acting on request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to zoning ordinance number 122401 as revised and amended by zoning ordinance number 061116 and codified in chapter 153 of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances establishing zoning classifications in districts so as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling two and seventy-eight hundredths acres designated as TMS number 741-79 from RS, single-family residential, to GC, general commercial. This is third reading, are there any changes?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
No changes.
All right, this, this third reading, do I have a motion, this be third reading?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilman Sees, second by Councilman Smith, any discussion? All in favor? I think I heard a "i."
Yeah.
All right. It is unanimous. All right, item number five, ordinance number 02032025, an ordinance to amend chapter 154 of the Code of Ordinances of New, County of Newberry, South Carolina, to adopt updated Newberry Can, County land development regulations. This is second reading. Do I have a motion to remove this from the table?
So moved.
Do I have a motion to remove it from the table by Councilman Fulmer, I have a second, second by Mr. Sees, any discussion? All in favor of removing it from the table?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Do I have a motion that this be second reading?
Uh, I move it.
Before we have that motion, I'd make a motion to postpone, and that we run it concurrently with our moratorium that we are reconsidering next.
Have a motion to postpone.
I second that.
Have a second by Mr. Fulmer, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number six, ordinance number 020422025, an ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance of Newberry County, South Carolina, as codified in chapter 153 of the Code of Ordinances of Newberry County, South Carolina, to establish regulations for the issuance of permits for the keeping, keeping of chickens on a non-commercial basis on residential properties in Newberry County as an accessory use. This is the second, uh, second reading in the public hearing, do we have any, anybody signed up for the public hearing? Mr. Forrest Byrd.
Now declare the public hearing open.
Yeah, this issue gets to me a little bit. I mean, I believe that everybody in the county should be able to join an HOA, they should be able to get together with other people in their neighborhood and decide, we want this, we don't want that, these are what we want in our area, sign neighborhood agreements and that kind of stuff, because it's voluntary, and it's freedom, and it's liberty, and it's by their own choice. What I don't believe is that people should be able to go into, go in and just, the old two wolves and a sheep, or twenty wolves and a sheep voting for lunch, and basically a big group tell, tell one individual because they don't like what he's doing, that no, you can't do that, or no, you can't do that, if he didn't voluntarily give up the right, it shouldn't be taken from him. So I think it's wrong to take people's rights, it's okay if they voluntarily agree to it, it's a wonderful thing to have HOAs, but the difference in liberty and freedom to choose is important, and when things are taken against your will, it's not freedom, it's basically tyranny of masses. So that's really my main point. Then when I read the regulations about the chicken thing, they all, they sounded good on the surface, but when you looked at all the lots, the chicken house almost has to be in the person's living room, right there on their deck, because the setback is the same as their house from the lake, or right at it, so there's no room to put it in the middle, and then it's got to be in the center of their lot, but basically between their deck and their dock. There's really not a practical way to follow those instructions, I mean, what percent of, what percent of people actually could have chickens in their yard based on those restrictions, I mean, what percent of the lots, does anybody know? I mean, I know it's very few, so basically, yeah, you're giving people permission to have chickens, but the rules are so strict, they're really, you know, it's like saying, yeah, you can have chickens, but, you know, you gotta have two miles of land, but I, it's just, the rules are so strict, they really much prohibit having chickens. That's pretty much all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. All right, there being no one else signed up, I will declare the public hearing now over. I have public comments at the end. Do I have a motion that this be second reading? Motion by Mr. Sees, any, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Fulmer, any discussion?
I'd just say, Mr. Chair, we work really, really hard, because I can address all the concerns that you have, and make this something where people can use the land in the way they want to, but make it considerate of neighbors and those kind of things, so I, I think the staff and the council have done a great job of crafting something that needs everybody to use.
It, it was definitely a lot of time and effort put into this ordinance, so, it's a, may not be perfect, but it's as close as we can get it at the time, so. All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Item number seven, ordinance number 02052025, an ordinance amending section 152.04 of Newberry County Code of Ordinances, chapter 152, flood damage prevention, to clarify the, the date of the flood insurance study of the Federal Emergency Management Agency identifying areas of special flood hazard within Newberry County, South Carolina, and reference therein. This is the public hearing, and I declare the public hearing open. And no, that being no one signed up, I declare the public hearing closed. This is the second reading, do I have a motion that this be second reading? Motion by Councilman Smith, I have a second, second by Councilman Fulmer, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number eight, ordinance number 03012025, an ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on the subdivision of a tract of land into five lots or more invoking application of the pending ordinance doctrine and protecting extended, existing vested rights as required by applicable law. Uh, Councilman, Mr. Shaker, you got any explanation on this?
Sure, sure, I'll be, I'll be glad to provide one. South Carolina law gives cities and counties that, that have land development and zoning programs to enact moratoriums, they have to be limited in temporary in scope and duration, and the ordinance that's before you now proposes a 270-day moratorium, which is roughly nine months, if council reads the ordinance for the first time tonight, second reading on the 19th, and third reading on the 2nd, the moratorium would, the 270 days would be, begin counting at that point in time on the 2nd, and would expire on December 27th, which is actually a Saturday, but, so that would be the duration of it. In terms of the scope limiting it, we propose to y'all that it be limited to subdivisions like you just read, of five lots or more, and you know, in our current land development regulations, and in the new land development regulations that we've postponed, so that we can, you know, look at it further, five lots or more is the delineation between a minor subdivision and a major subdivision, and that's more of an administrative thing, but, so we're talking about major subdivisions where the lots are two acres or smaller, the intent was not to impact large, you know, the division of large acreage in the county, this was more focused on small subdivisions, which, you know, in most cases would be developed residentially, so the ordinance proposes to do that. The other thing that we wanted to make clear is in South Carolina, there's a doctrine called pending ordinance doctrine, and basically, in this particular case, with this ordinance, and you see pending ordinance applied mostly with zoning and land development regulations, that it would become effective immediately upon first reading, so while the clock, the 270-day clock doesn't begin ticking until third reading, the effectiveness of the ordinance is immediate, so if council were to approve first reading tonight, the ordinance would be effective then. The other thing we wanted to make clear in the ordinance is that there are developments that are underway or preparing to be underway that have statutory vested rights under the South Carolina Vested Rights Act, and those would be any, in this case, major subdivision, five lots or more, that has received approval that has received approval from the Planning Commission of a sketch and/or preliminary plat. You know, the law talks about it in terms of a site-specific development plan, which, in the case of five lots or more, has to go to the Planning Commission. That's a major subdivision by ordinance that goes to the Planning Commission. So if that hasn't occurred and the Planning Commission hasn't approved it, then there is no statutory vested right. So we wanted to make sure that those three things were addressed in the ordinance. And, you know, what this will do, I think I've heard you say it and other members of council, this isn't a stop button, this is pressing the pause button. And this just gives county council, the Planning Commission, and staff more time to evaluate the county's land development regulations, which again are the standards that are applied to subdivisions when they are, when they do occur. And the zoning ordinance, which of course determines where certain types of the development can occur and the density of that. And this gives us nine months to do that. The ordinance does provide for council the ability to extend the moratorium 30 days. But the key with a moratorium, it has to be reasonable, and there's a due diligence requirement. We have to use our time wisely during this period. So if we were to come to council, or if council were to want to exercise that 30-day extension, we would need to be able to demonstrate the necessity of doing that.
Thank you for the explanation. This is the first reading. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion for first reading.
A motion, Mr. Sees, uh, second. Second by Mr. Fulmer. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just say that we heard our citizens, and this is just something we want to get right after five days later. And so I think it's a wise move for Newberry County.
I concur. I just add that we know growth is coming. We just want to make sure we have it the right way. And that'll give us a little time just to make sure that we get it the way we want it. All right, all in favor? Councilman Johnson? All right, it is unanimous. All right, item number nine, consideration and approval of a bid for debris removal from Lynch's Woods Park, bid number 2025-1. Mr. Schacker?
Yeah, yes, sir. This is a, the scope of work that's proposed here would be removing fallen trees and hazard trees within 100 foot of either side of the road going through Lynch's Woods Park. This project is, of course, we have a consultant onboard. That was an award y'all made recently to help us with FEMA reimbursements. This would be FEMA eligible, so this is an expense that we can recover from FEMA. We received bids from five companies to do this work for us. And the low bid, which is both responsible and responsive, is from SLY Construction in the amount of $123,582.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Councilman Smith, seconded by Reverend Scurry. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. All right, number 10, appointments.
Chairman, I have an appointment for the Airport Commission, like to appoint Jimmy Bickley.
We have an appointment for the Airport Commission, District 5, Jimmy Bickley. Do I have a motion to accept? Motion by Reverend Scurry, seconded by Mr. Councilman Sees. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. The Upper Savannah Workforce Development Board, Newberry County Representative.
I have an appointment to make.
Okay.
Stacy Felicia, who is the HR Director at Samsung.
We have Stacy Felicia. Do I have a motion to accept? Councilman Smith, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Fulmer? Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. All right, public comments. We have none signed up. We'll allow one for a brief moment. Even though you didn't sign up. Yes, please sign, please sign up first.
Jeff, I was gonna ask you. This gentleman talked about the setbacks and things with the chickens. That's my main goal, that's why I'm here. So I'm trying to figure out exactly, on the lay, what is those setbacks?
Sure, let me, if you don't mind, let me pull the ordinance up. Okay. And we've got tiers, you know, the, what the ordinance provides for is up to 18 hens. It's just the setback requirements grow with the larger the number. Okay, so if it's six hens or fewer, it's 25 feet from the side or rear property line, and 50 foot from the 360 contour on Lake Murray.
We're good.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to make sure of.
Yep.
I mean, I've got plenty of property to do it on. So I just wanted to kind of check with that. I haven't seen anything as far as what your requirements were. So, but we're good. Thanks, guys.
All right. Comments from the administrator?
Uh, yes, sir. Well, we have one thing that'll be coming to you shortly. I don't know if it'll be on the 19th or the 2nd, but we did receive statements of qualifications from architectural firms to do the design work on the Whitmire Streetscape project. So that's moving forward. You know, that's a project with CDBG funding. You know, we received a $750,000 community development block grant for that. And then we've got one CPST project where the bid documents are done. It's actually the detention center. But we've got monitoring wells that need to be relocated so that we can build the dormitory where it needs to go. And so we're waiting on, you know, that's in process. And then we have another CPST project that is, construction documents or bid documents are being drawn up now. So that project will be bidding soon. And more will follow. That's just the first one that'll hit. And it'll be great to have several of them under contract because we'll have a much better feel for what the financial landscape of the CPST looks like.
Very good.
Yeah.
Great, very good. Comments from council? Councilman Fulmer?
Yeah, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. It's always a pleasure to see everybody here. And we welcome your comments, concerns, whatever you may have for what we are involved with. We, I can personally speak for each council member. We are committed to try to do the best we can for the citizens of Newberry County. Obviously, it's a difficult task, try to satisfy everyone, but we do try to take everything into consideration. So anyway, again, thank you everybody for coming out tonight. Please keep our volunteers in your thoughts and your prayers. We have, as Councilman Sees said, we have some volunteers at the coast helping with the fires. But certainly keep the rest of our guys and ladies in your thoughts and prayers. We, we have such a tremendous workforce of volunteers in Newberry County, fire service, EMS service, and we are blessed to have them. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Smith?
Yes, I'd like to thank you everyone for coming out and participating in your local government. And also, I'd like to just concur with Mr. Fulmer about our first responders. They had a really busy week this week, a lot of woods fires with the red flag alert, and it taxed them pretty hard this weekend. And also, you know, sending two apparatuses and two crew members down. For our neighbors, it helped out a lot. And when we need help, they'll help us also too. So keep them all in your prayers. It has been a really busy week for house fires and had a house fire earlier, day two. So thank y'all guys for coming out tonight, okay?
Reverend Scurry?
Thank y'all all coming out, especially this disability family. Thank y'all so much for coming out, supporting your loved ones, everybody in Newberry County. Thank you all so much.
Councilman Johnson?
Just again, thankful for our first responders, thank everybody for being out. And thankful for our staff. We had a couple of projects that we needed to have, one of them was a big project, 121. And another part of the city of, in our library, so thank you, Jeff, and our staff, and that. And I should have asked you to probably do this, but we haven't, they don't have a sidewalk project.
We're still trying to finalize that construction easement. And once that's done, the project will be ready to bid.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm glad to be on the measure and just appreciate all the work, so we're still making all that happen.
Vice Chair Sees?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. And I think council made the right decision by putting the moratorium in effect on building for 270 days because we saw we needed to add some things to our ordinances and the land development thing, and it was the right thing to do. We know we're gonna have to have growth in the county, but we want to make sure we plan it right. We want to make sure we put it in the right place. We want to make sure our infrastructure can support the additional homes and not overload our first responders, law enforcement, EMS, fire services, and schools, roads, water services, all this involved that supports the increase of population. Just making sure we get it right. Thank you.
And I echo all of those remarks. We got to figure out what we want to be when we grow up. So we need, we need a little bit of time to make that decision. But we're gonna, we're gonna get there, growth's coming. We know it's coming. Let's prepare for it the right way and put it where we want it and how we want it. I think it's a great decision and happy that we did that. Thank you for everyone coming out and having a part in local government. Thank you for the disabilities association for being here. Y'all do great work. Thank a lot of you. Future meetings, Newberry County Economic Development Committee, March 10th at 5:00 p.m. Newberry County Council Work Session, March 19th at 5:00 p.m. Newberry County Council Meeting, March 19th at 6:00 p.m. Newberry County Financial Committee, March 24th at 5:00 p.m. Newberry County Council Work Session, April 2nd at 5:00 p.m. Newberry County Council Meeting, April 2nd at 6:00 p.m. Also, March 12th, Hurricane Helene follow-up debriefing. We will have a quorum of council at that meeting. There will be no action taken during that meeting.
Also, the.
Also, we have a meeting with the.
Auditor.
Auditor, that we will have a quorum for.
On the 12th.
On the 12th, on the 12th as well, that afternoon. There will be no action taken there either. I do believe that that concludes the future meetings. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Smith, seconded by Reverend Scurry. Any discussion? All in favor? Do I adjourn?